Executive session, up to the public portion of the meeting, just to accommodate everyone. Alright, so the first part is consent agenda, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the minutes from 406 for corrections.
Yes, I saw that too. Okay.
Regular session, vote.
Just a regular session.
Okay. And how's it changes? Motion, there's a motion to approve those, you know what? This is called the second.
Second, second. There's only one thing I'd like to ask Mr. Riddick. On the new business of the elementary school open house, did you, did they pick a date?
May third.
May third, oh what?
Yep.
So how will it be?
It'll be advertised through a press release, also on our website. Tours will be given every hour on the hour.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's good, thank you very much.
Okay, so Paul O'Pittigore. Set, no corrections for regular session 406.
Under two old business, the second vote on the senate bill, the vote was for in favor of one abstention.
Abstention, yes. Oh, that's right, it was, thank you. Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, with this change, a motion?
Actually, that was on those.
Oh. Right, oh, I'm sorry, it's not under old business, it's under new business. I'm sorry, cap. It was under new business that second, that's why I couldn't find that
Yeah.
legislation number. S2603, yes, thank you, Dana.
So is-
It's for in favor of one abstention. Under new business, the vote was not on old business. Under old business, that vote was granted.
So do you have the corrections straight right now?
Yes, the business and-
With this correction, a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion approved, second.
On the favor. Okay, so we are done with the consent agenda.
The, if I could just announce, the teaching assistant resignation Ranger School, Deborah Darkout, and Fort Barton's second, Fort Barton School, grade two retirement, Deborah Mello. And again, Mrs. Mello's been with us for many years. Very good teacher, and again, someone else, another good teacher that, I don't want to say we're losing, but has chosen a different career path into retirement. So she'll be missed by the staff and the students at Fort Barton School.
I'd just like to also offer my congratulations to Mrs. Mello upon her retirement. All three of my children were fortunate to have her as a second grade teacher. She was certainly an integral part of the Fort Barton team. And they had a very good experience with her.
And I said the same, and also, Ms. Darkout helped in the kindergarten, and that was a, ended up to be a large classroom, and we really needed the support there, so I'm glad that she helped there. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the comments, 2010, a lot of the budget, please.
Yes, I'm asking the committee to consider, recommendation, my recommendation. Mrs. Trish Martins, who is the director for Newport County Regional Special Ed, and I have gone through the budget, and along with her assistant directors. Based on student need and student population for next year, I'm recommending to the committee, Trish's approval or agreement, that we can reduce our teaching staff by two full-time special education teaching positions, and 2.8 special education teacher assistant positions, which combined would save an additional $228,356.
Does this mean we will no longer have a self-contained classroom at the high school?
That's correct, our special needs self-contained classroom, which services currently four students, will be disbanded, and those students, the two remaining students, will be going to Middletown, where there's a regional program there, that's where our students used to go for years, same type of program, but it's located in Middletown.
So they're restructuring?
They're restructuring the program based on our needs, number of students, and Trish is comfortable with, matter of fact, the recommendation came from them.
Right.
So does that mean we'll have an increase in a purchase services line?
No.
Because we will pay to have them?
No, it's a regional program, so we, these are one of the programs where we share, where we don't have to pay extra, similar to our behavioral support class that we have at the middle school. We have students from other districts in the region, so there's no additional cost. So that's where we get our save, one of our major savings, is so that we share those types of programs.
And the services will still be provided?
Yes, so the service will certainly be provided.
Transportation, also no increase?
No, there's nothing, it's all accounted for.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so the total savings, as you said, two?
Hundred and twenty eight thousand, three fifty six, and then if you look at the chart, the running total, you know, where we have savings, currently we are at 548,314, that is over the cap.
It's on page four.
It's on page four A, it's the last, one of the last pages, actually, it is the last page. If you deduct the two teaching positions and the special ed teacher assistant positions, the number over the cap that we would be at is 319,982. Now, our number, so it's simple for people, voters, we are asking for the cap. So even if our number is approved at the town meeting, if this recommendation's approved, the committee would still have to make $319,000 reductions to get to the cap number. So that's what this represents, and you know what it means.
Us, the cap number, us calculated based on our numbers?
Absolutely.
As of now?
As of now.
As of now.
If new information comes in?
We are currently, just, you guys are jumping the gun a little on me, but we were up at Ride this past Thursday, Mr. McGundy, Mrs. Black, Mr. Fiore, and I, to discuss the issue of what number to use, for lack of a better description. We met with Carolyn Dias, who is the financial officer for Ride, as well as with Cindy Brown, and Forrest Avia, who is one of the attorneys for Ride. We brought to their attention our concerns. We believe, we know they're working on it, Mr. Robinson spoke with Mr. Avia today. They're working on a response, we hope to have it within a couple of days, and we'll be able to report out, and if the number does change, there's still time left before the town meeting, if it was lower, in other words, if our number was incorrect, and we had to change it, there's certainly time to do so.
And just a reminder, our number is $25,645,096. In total, it represents a 3% increase over the current budget. Despite us using the cap amount, we're also estimating a decrease in state aid.
And when you look at, and also when you look at the tentative docket, the most recent version that we've seen, the reduction that the budget committee wants to make to the school department is 19.5%. At $20,47,009, is it 62? 961. That's a reduction from the 24-9 that we currently have, of 19 and a half percent.
Our number is no longer 21,285,285?
That's the local portion, combined with our state aid.
But in order for us to meet the DEP, we need that, the total.
We've also requested clarification from Ride on how that number should be presented at the financial town meeting. And we're awaiting their response on that as well.
Right, but, so if we look and compare the local appropriation as will be presented by the budget committee versus the number we will put forward, the difference is 1.2 million.
Correct.
So if the budget committee number is approved, that will be the second year that the school committee would get $1 more. And we would be looking at cutting 1.2 million dollars from our budget.
That's correct.
Etymenonym.
Etymenonym.
And those options would all come from this worksheet that we have posted online.
Yes. And just to go to that worksheet, and it's been, and we have talked about it for a while. And I have spoken to the committee, this committee and previous committees that I've been fortunate enough to work with. And I've always warned the committee, not to, committee members, not to put things out there just to rile the public, to generate support. In other words, don't say you're going to cut a program unless you really mean it. Unless you're going to do it, because you lose all credibility after that point. And to date, we have never done that. But now with the committee, the school committee myself, Mr. Fiore, we are faced possibly with the second year in a row getting a dollar more. That 1.2 million, we can't make happen. There's a couple of ways it can happen, but if, the way the committee chooses, if you choose to reduce the budget, 1.2 million comes out, and the only things that we have to cut is to consider closing an elementary school, one of the three new ones that we just built. Athletics, and music. Both at the middle school, at the middle school music program, band program, as well as strings and chorus at the high school. Along with 10 additional teaching positions. The committee would have to consider to get to that 1.2 million. These are very drastic cuts that the committee would have to make. I believe the public now needs to know that things are shaping up to be, this is probably the most important vote that's been taken in this town in some time.
But cannot forget about the, one additional issue, that the committee, there's one additional option, which is to get deep concessions from the teachers' union, and we have to honestly admit that this committee failed to obtain such concession as of today. So this is not just the only option which is available, which is to cut the programs, but there are other options, the combined option includes getting concessions from the teachers' union.
Getting $320,000 worth of concessions from the teachers will get us to cap. We are counting on at least $320,000 worth of concessions from the teachers to get to cap. We have budgeted $320,000 worth of concessions from the teachers.
We budgeted 500, am I right?
Eighteen percent, co-share.
500.
I believe it was four, four forty-five, or four fifty?
Four forty-five, yeah, 445.
So, with concessions, should we get $1 more, we will need to cut 1.2 million dollars from our schools. And I would encourage
That's true.
everyone who's interested, who will be voting at the financial town meeting, to go online to the Tibbeton Schools website, and look at the potential reductions that we will be looking at as a school committee, should we be faced with cutting 1.2 million. I've done that. And this is what I've found. If we want to preserve our academic programming, we're going to have to begin by closing one of the three new elementary schools for a savings of approximately $570,000. Again, to preserve academic programming, we could then eliminate all extracurricular activities. That means every sports team and every after-school activity for a savings of approximately $231,000. Those cuts, all after-school activities and sports, closing one elementary school only get us $738,000 worth of cuts, meaning we have $462,000 that we would still have to cut. If we go one step further and eliminate middle school band, high school chorus, and the strings program, we would save $110,000. We're still looking at $350,000 left of cuts. That brings us to five or six teaching positions at the high school that we would have to eliminate. And I'm certain that if we did that, we would be open to legal action for violating the basic education program mandated by the state. That is why it's so important for people to look at this list of potential reductions and understand what it means for the school department to get a dollar more for a second year in a row. If that happens, and we cut 1.2 million, the town will no longer have a school system that we can be proud of.
This is all true, what you said, but at the same time, we have to be aware that even if we get the cap, and we do not get concessions from the union, we will be in the same position of cutting the programs, not to this extent, but we will still be cutting programs because according to your numbers. Now, closing the, closing the, closing the elementary school does not result in a net savings of half a million dollars. To us, yes, but to the town, and we are part of this town. So we cannot count that this is 500,000 dollars savings, it's truly 250. And so, I know.
Can I-
There's only one problem.
Can I ask the chair to just take action on my recommendation for the reductions? At least we can-
Get that on the books.
It's a pretty easy one, because it's, it's not to impact the students, so. Do I have a motion to approve the reduction as indicated by the superintendent's? This will be eliminating two full-time special education positions, and reduction of 2.8 special education teaching position.
Teacher assistant.
Teacher assistant.
Sorry, I didn't check that correctly.
Do I have a motion to do that?
Motion to approve the reduction.
Mrs. Carman, Mrs. Walter, second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Could I just, thank you, could I just make a comment regarding the budget?
Please.
There's been a lot being sent out on the airwaves and being put down in print about how the school department has hidden money. And I want to, and I, it's simple. The monies that are quote "hidden" or "found," or this great revelation that people have had, we're talking about Title I monies, which have been around since 1965, when the Elementary and Secondary Education Act was passed. The second group of monies that are restricted are IEP money or special education money, which has been around since 1974, when the Individuals with Disabilities Act was first passed. These funds have always been available to the school department because they're restricted. They are not to be included, if people took the time to look at how those funds are to be used, and you can go online and punch in history of Title I and IDA, and you can find out how those funds are to be used. It's restricted and not to be used as part of operational aid, not to be calculated in that manner. And for people to represent that, that myself, Mr. Fiore, and this committee has hidden money or done something nefarious is simply untrue, inaccurate. And as I said before, I will challenge anyone to a debate on how our budget was made, where our numbers came from. I'll have the discussion anytime, anywhere, any place, as long as it's filmed by a third party, so the people in this town can see for themselves who's being honest and straightforward. I'm not going to tolerate, I'm not going to allow my reputation to be sullied by people with hidden agendas, and, you know, when you don't have the truth on your side, you throw up a lot of smoke and mirrors. And that's what's going on here, and people in this community need to know that our numbers have always been accurate. If anyone had problems with our numbers, we meet every other Tuesday, right here in this room. And people could have come forward, can come forward and ask us anything. And to sit there and throw cheap shots at us and not come and direct your questions to us, I think that speaks to the motives of people who are making those allegations, those unfounded allegations. And enough is enough. We can agree on negotiations, not going as well as we want, this, that, and the other thing. But to say that we're hiding money, or that we're doing something illegal, is absolutely absurd. And I challenge anybody to come forward and show us how we're being, we're hiding money. And that this is newfound money, and it can be used in calculations. You know, you have people on the budget committee who are using dollar amounts for the funding formula to inflate the number, and the funding formula's not even being considered. This has to stop, people need to know what's going on. It's a fact, those are, that's the truth. That funding formula isn't even being looked at.
And Ride has told us not to use-
And Ride has told people, Carolyn Dias was adamant about it. They sent out, you know, just papers saying, use the governor's number, which we have used. And that's what, one of the things that Ride's going to be looking at, when they look at that whole number. But to say we're hiding numbers, and that we're misleading the public, let's have that discussion and debate. I know the committee would like to have that discussion, as well as I would. I'll have it anytime, anywhere, anyplace.
I would like to emphasize that those restricted funds flow through the municipal side.
That's correct.
The town treasurer sees them, they are included in every yearly audit. So I don't see how they can be considered hidden when they're in every yearly audit.
You can go-
Also, the town handles their restricted funds in the same way. They're not considered part of the operating budget.
And Ride has it on their website, it takes two, five minutes to click, and you can see the amount of Title I funds, IDA money. I mean, this isn't something new to people. And to portray it as something other than what it is, is just misrepresenting the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick, for making this statement on our behalf. I 100% agree with what you said. This is the, this is dishonest to make these kind of statements, because it leads to, as I remember, for all the four years on this committee, we were never trying to hide any money, and we were more than force coming with any information anyone ever requested, so I don't know where is the statement coming from, that we are trying to hide Title I monies.
Part of the statement is coming from the fact that people have explicitly asked for all available state and federal funds that have come to the school committee. And regardless of whether they are used to calculate the numbers, they should be on there and written that it's restricted.
With all due respect, who's asked it besides Mr. Lambert? We provided that information to him. The budget committee has never asked for that information.
I believe, did Mr. Riddick-
Mr. Lambert asked it, and we provided it.
Whenever anybody has asked Mr. Fiore for any information, Mr. Fiore has always supplied it. And if you've heard that somebody emailed him or called Mr. Fiore and asked for information and did not receive it, I would not believe it, because he is always quick to respond to any requests for information.
I agree with anything that I've asked him of, but I have seen a letter that they requested information of any and all, and it wasn't included on our budget that we submitted, and so they were concerned about that.
Because those funds can't be calculated into the numbers. In the future-
So it's fine.
But after we've explained it, but after we explained it, it should have ended there. So what you're saying is, again, feeding into the misrepresentation. That people are saying that we're lying. The money is there, the money's on websites, the money is a public information.
For somebody else to know exactly what that's called in order to request it?
We've told them.
If any and all means any and all. If you want to put it on the sheet and say that it's restricted, it's restricted, that's perfectly fine.
But that's after, but that was four months ago. We've had these discussions with the budget committee in February, they didn't ask us then, when we were face-to-face with them, no one said anything to us?
That's the point, is they requested any and all.
But they didn't feel they could have asked them?
If they didn't know there was anything missing, what are they supposed to ask for?
Well, why didn't they follow it up? They say if we didn't respond to them, say, hey, guys, you didn't respond to this, how come? Where's the information? They never said that to us.
I don't know about that.
Well, they didn't, I mean, we were there, they didn't ask it.
Could I just say that I've been going through this process now, six years, five years, and the budget committee going to all their meetings, going to all the town council meetings, and the cross-school committee meetings. And in the past, it's going like this, we go before the budget committee, and so does the fire chief, and the police chief, and DPW scenes. We all go through, all go and tell them what we need for that year. Then the big night comes when the revenue number comes out, and how much we have to spend to support our services. And then we've been asked to come back. If we don't have enough money, or whatever it is, we've been asked to come back as a body and discuss it thoughtfully, and find solutions as to how we can keep to run the town and afford it with the money that we have. That was what it used to be, every year that I was there. Not that it didn't get contentious, and we did have debates, and sometimes heated debates, but as I've always said, in the end, the number that that budget committee recommended is the number that came to the town floor. Even one year, we had a meeting a half hour before, because they figured out we needed 100 more from the school committee and 250 from the town. We all needed a half hour before, then we changed the number, so we could come to what the town needed to function. And then we all voted on it. Now, this year, we went, and it was a dollar more, after being cut, as we know, last year, we were by five votes, by 650. We asked for only 1.5% last year. We met, now, the thing that amazes me is that, being on this committee, I've always seen the decisions being student-driven. Mr. Riddick meets with his principals, he meets with his staff, he says, what can we cut, what can we do? Just as we did again tonight, we got more information, we made another vote, and cut it. And that's how it's always been. And it's always been student-driven and by the students' needs. I always say, is this because of numbers, budget numbers, or is this because we don't need it? Because maybe we don't have as many students. Last year, we cut a kindergarten class at Ranger because the students were down. All of a sudden, an influx came in, the numbers went way up, and transferred some to Fort Barton, right? To get to 23 or 24 of them? That's a large number for, you know, kindergarten, so anyway, that's what happens. We made decisions on the best information, and then that turned out to be too many kids. But my point is, this year, we weren't asked to come back, we weren't asked for any more information. We would just cut the dollar more. And the last time this happened, my children were in kindergarten, second and third grade, Fort Barton. They cut us a dollar more at the town meeting. They closed those two schools, and they all went to Pecassett. Pecassett's a wonderful school, but no school's wonderful when it's overcrowded, when you have classrooms at the library, and never at the room. The schoolyard was amazingly disastrous, the bus ride. The next year, the town, the school nurse came and begged for the people to please reopen the schools, because the education is hurt when the classes are overcrowded, we all know that, all the studies say that. So this is very serious, we're trying to work with the numbers, we've gone up to the state. I testified at the budget committee. When I saw the docket that night, and I saw the number from the funding formula in there instead of the governor's recommendation, because Mr. Fiore and I were at a funding formula conference, and we asked specifically, what number do we use when building our budget? This number? They said, no, no, this isn't passed, there's a lot of funding formulas coming, we haven't worked on it yet. We don't know what's going to pass, use the governor's number, so that's what we put in there.
Which is the 3.8% cut.
I stood up at the meeting, and I said, excuse me, why are you using this funding formula number when you know we were told not to use it? I told them that night before they voted on it, so it's not like they didn't know it. So I just wanted you to know, this, all this information's been out. We're doing our best to not ask the town, and I've said for five years that the federal government's only contributing 3% or 4%, the state and the teens, and we have the rest on our backs. I've said that for five years, there's no hidden money about the federal government. And the only money I want hidden is something you find in your pocket after you do the wash, maybe $5. I don't want one more cent, and I know that that's what we're working on. I've always said that. If I find out there's any money hidden, there's going to be something to pack, and I think we're going for it. We have to all come together and look for solutions. We're fighting against each other, people calling us liars, all these different things, and it's just, it's just not going to work out, it's just not the way a community runs. Economic development, they gave a wonderful presentation last night of what they're trying to do. They have a website, it's called Tibbeton Open for Business. This is what we need, these men meet every month, I go every month and see the hard work they're putting in. The Chamber of Commerce is putting in money to pay for the website. The budget committee cut the Chamber of Commerce, League of Cities and Towns, visiting nurses, economic development. The planner, an MIT graduate who's doing a fantastic job, they cut him. So you want business to come, you want to be business-friendly, and yet you're doing all these other things. So it's not just the schools that are suffering this year, it's the whole town. East Bay community, people that helped, the people that needed the most now, the dental and medical services. You just can't be doing that at a time like this. We have to all come together, start calling each other's names, and look for solutions. Thank you.
Mr. McGundy, Mrs. Talos, if you're voting.
Okay, my turn. Just two quick things to follow up with Mrs. Black. You said that there's an aid number included that shouldn't be used. You guys said at the beginning that it's a 19.5% cut, but I'm reading and hearing it's 2% increase. Is it because of the aid?
It depends, when you, when you look at the budget committee's number, they're giving us $20,47,000. From last year, we were given $24,900. From last year, we were given $24 million, nine hundred, nineteen and a half reduction right there. We're asking for $26 million, excuse me, $25 million, six forty-five oh ninety-six.
But they're reporting a total two percent increase. Does that include the bottom line with the aid that Sally was saying that they shouldn't have been, they were told not to use?
Right. They count, they're showing that our state aid increased by eight point nine percent.
And it has not, it is not going?
No, it's been cut three point eight percent.
Okay.
No, the state aid number we're using, that we use is the governor's number. It's a reduction of three point eight percent in state aid. The issue is, at least with the last, the most recent proposed docket, the Budget Committee is not allocating any, they're not accounting for operational aid from the state or the federal government.
The only number that appears on the docket-
The only number that appears is the $20 million, forty-seven thousand, nine sixty-one.
But the total number, it's got, it's got the proposed-
Our number, our number has the aid, the three point eight reduction in aid in it.
The number proposed to be voted is the $20 million, forty-seven thousand, nine sixty-one. So we're unsure if that represents two percent increase over the-
We're not sure. So it's a dollar more.
I guess my point I was getting to is, that was my understanding too, is that they're using an aid, an aid number from Rhode Island Department of Ed that-
Funding formula.
That's not representative of anything. No one said to use it. No one said, "This is the number." So it's showing a $500,000 aid increase, but there really isn't one.
There's numerous issues aside from Wright telling us not to use that for budgeting purposes. One of the most serious ones that hasn't been contemplated was there's about $700,000 of that aid that is now considered restricted aid that the state was going to propose rolling into our general aid number. But that would mean that we have $700,000 of expenses that we need to either cut out of our budget or add it in.
Oh, because the governor's budget doesn't include that. So you've got apples to oranges. Okay, I'm there. Okay, thank you. The second point I wanted to just sort of make, and I'm not excusing any of the accusations. Accusations and name-calling and saying people are lying are always inexcusable. However, I did audit many cities and towns and it is confusing. I think where the confusion comes in is the restricted aid. We don't show the revenue, but we don't show the expenses either. Because when you go to the town and you're looking at the docket, we're talking about the revenue we can use that we're going to, because we're levying a tax and we're looking at the aid that we can use to, that we're going to include, that's general educational aid. So you sum up those two numbers and that's, that's what you're going to levy a tax on. Restricted aid has nothing to do with general expenses. You can't take IDEA money and pay for a math teacher.
Sure.
It's nothing-
Right. And we've had this discussion at the Budget Committee in prior Budget Committees before. We actually talked about several years putting it on the docket. I think Mr. Rerick remembers. And it got so confusing because people would want it to grab it and say, "Well, wait a minute. We can use that to offset." Well, you couldn't. It was very complicated to explain. Not that we shouldn't explain it, but it's not hidden. It's not that it hasn't been discussed. I think you're right. I mean, we do, there's an A-133 audit, it's called, that if you look in the back of our financial statements, there's actually tougher procedures on those monies than there are on anything else. So anyone that looked at the financial statements, and I would certainly hope that the Budget Committee is looking at our audited financial statements, can see that that money's there.
Right. So they actually wouldn't need to come to the schools for any of those numbers? They'd just have to get the audit?
No, those come in through the treasurer and they're in the audit.
The treasurer or the audit?
Every dollar that the town receives goes through the treasurer.
But I'm not, I just, but it is confusing.
It is complicated.
It's not, because it's, it's not part of what we levy. It's restricted. The expenses come out. The, the revenue comes out. It can't be used to, to pay for general expenses.
And it's not unique to the school side. It would be someone's public safety grant or an economic development grant. We're not going to see that.
The library aid, the library aid on the town comes right from the state, right to the library, and it's not shown anywhere. Right. That's my point. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want somebody to call? All right, so if there's no more, is there no more?
Just one more statement, Mr. Begundy. That's why we asked for the town meeting to be moved. And Mr. Warfle and Mr. Edwards and also Mr. Feelag and Mr. De, they all went up and asked for that. And it passed, one of them passed the House. It was a gentleman from Forster-Gorster. And it went right through. There was no debate. It was to do it up to ninety days. But then the Senate kicked it back, so it didn't go through. But that's why we asked for it. So if we get really good numbers, we could say, "This is exactly what we're going to get from the state, which we're already here in June, like last year. We heard the last week in June when they voted on it. I was there." And then we could say, "The federal government, ARRA money, stabilization, this and that." The state gets it, but they take away their money and stuff in there. But anyway, we'd be able to come right to the town and say, "This is exactly the numbers. This is exactly what we need from you." And I would be much more comfortable with that. That's why we asked for that.
Also, while we're on this, I will add my few cents to this. As you remember, I was pushing for specifically asking Wright for their opinion on how to look at these numbers, how to interpret them, how to interpret the ARRA money. So someone else from outside at a state level who actually intercepted the federal money and then sent them back through the town to the school department. The question is, to which stream of revenue does this belong and how does this impact our base? Well, otherwise, we can just talk and accuse each other of being wrong or have bad intentions. But like, once, once these numbers come, and we already said this before, if we are wrong, we are going to be the first to correct that number. So if Wright is going to tell us, "You are wrong. The number is different," we'll be the first one to correct it. And what we are going to do, we are going to schedule our meeting, tentatively, our meeting just before financial town meeting. So if the answer comes at the last minute, we still will be able, within the law of open meeting rules, we will still be able to make the last correction because the number which we proposed at the financial town meeting has to be voted on by the entire committee. It cannot be that we got this number and I or Sally, I ourselves, are going to substitute a different number. So we are ready for even the last-minute correction to this, but this is going to be based on the state ruling how this all is counted. So what are we trying to hide here? If we are trying to hide, hide things here, the answer might not be in our favor. We don't know. But we still ask for that because we want this to be the honest number and present this to the taxpayer and have a backup. This is not what we were told because we were told certain things, but this is worth nothing. We want to have it in writing. And this will be posted. It will be available. If we have it, we will make copy with all the other pink work which is distributed during financial town meeting if we need this, so everyone can look at this. And we will take it from there.
I'll say.
I'll say. All right. Okay, so we are done with the budget, at least our discussion for today.
Other than, this is our last meeting. Before you go though, ask the voters to come out. May eighth is our last meeting. Nine o'clock, right here at the high school.
Absolutely.
People, no matter how people will vote, they need, they need to come. They need to vote so their voice can be heard, so.
Absolutely. We don't want to hear later on, "Why did this?" or "What happened?" Every single vote is going to count. It is not, it's not sufficient if you believe in, and you vote, you want to vote for one particular side. It's not sufficient just to send one delegate from the family because if there are three adults who can vote, these are three votes. Right here, you have four votes and Mr. Wright is the fifth vote. The whole school committee has only five votes. So I would encourage everyone to come and vote whatever they feel like, whatever's supposed to happen. We will explain what are the consequences of particularly for schools.
And if we have to call another meeting, of course, if you now, then we will, and we'll close it and everything.
And then, well, there's no more question which I have actually on this matter. What's going to happen if all of a sudden we exceed the capacity of, if I happen?
We, the plan historically, again, it's the town's dance, so to speak.
I know.
But the auditorium is the auxiliary place. They have a live feed going in there. They would have to take votes. They would have to obviously maybe swing in more counters than usual so the counters can be assigned directly to the auditorium. In the past, it used to be the auditorium and then the cafeteria.
You have to give the people the right to speak.
Right. And then they have to have the right to be able to speak. So the town's going to have to set something up in the auditorium, and I'm not really sure how that works. How people can speak in the auditorium so it can be heard, you know, in the, in the gym. But that's really, and I know the town contracts that out to a company, so that's something that I'll talk to Mrs. Miller about.
Because I know people have questions about that.
I believe, I believe they would follow that format because that's what they've used in the past.
Correct.
I might briefly summarize the budget situation. Right now, we're asking for $617,000 of additional funds. Six hundred, and we're losing over $500,000 of IDEA, ARRA funds that were a one-time boost to our revenues this year. So basically, those services need to be provided. Those expenses aren't going to go away no matter what we do. We still have children with IEDs. That's going to basically eat up over half of the additional funds we're asking for. The remaining $400,000 gets eaten up because of our 20% increase in health insurance. That means all of the other increases in our budget have to be funded in some other form. Over the process that we've gone through over the last five months, we've cut out a million dollars plus of expenses in our budget to get there. We still have a ways to go and we're working on it. But I just wanted to, the $917,000 we're asking for basically will fund the, the one-time stimulus money that we received for special ed and our health insurance. The rest of it, we've had to make cuts, significant cuts through attrition, personnel-wise. We've pretty much every major expense that we have control over, we're in a collaborative or some sort of approved purchasing agreement. We're doing whatever we can to keep the expenses at minimum.
And also, our staffing has gone down six and a half percent in three years. The number of teachers and teacher assistants. So as Mrs. Black has mentioned, we have made the appropriate reductions over time as the need saw fit.
That's twenty-two. Anybody else? As our members have asked.
Can I just, because it's so confusing because there's so many numbers out there. You're saying our request is 917. There's a 1.2 million number out there. Just to get people from that to that, the additional 300 is the disputed ARRA money that you're asking for clarification.
Right. But to make it simple for everybody, Mr. Begundy gives the number for the school committee. If people support the schools, that's the number they, they will vote for. If people support what Mr. Goncalo and the county council are asking for, the number that Mr. Bowlin puts forward, people will vote for that. I know there's a lot of numbers swirling around, but it really becomes that simple.
I'm a CPA and I hate them. But just to get people from the gap to 917 to 1.2, that is what it is. It is disputed 300.
So if the budget committee number of a dollar more gets approved, the school committee will have to cut 1.2 million dollars from our budget, from the list that's online.
Okay.
And our ticket is to present a budget at the cap, not over the cap. I think that needs to clarify.
Right. That's our number. It's a cap number.
Our responsibility is to stay under the cap, our own cap. For this, at some point, there was only one cap for the whole town.
That's correct.
There were complaints that schools are draining funds from the municipal side using the entire cap for the entire town. For that reason, there was a separate cap introduced for the school department. Now we have our own upper ceiling which we cannot exceed. At no point in this discussion, obviously, we are above that point because we don't want to make the cuts until we know actually what has to be cut. We promise that we will submit whatever this legal cap number is, which part of this is inquiry of Mr. Wright, we will be under this legal cap on our side. The fact that the town might have a problem to, to actually stay under their cap or as, as the entire municipality, we obviously feel that we are part of the community and we do whatever we can to stay as low as we can below our cap to contribute to the other side for that particular reason. I'm not counting on closing the school as, as $500,000 savings to us because it is not. Because if we do 500 savings here on our side, being selfish, we still have to know that the town is going to pay additional 250, well, they were not going to get $250,000 in reimbursement from the state for their part of building new schools. So the net savings, quote unquote, to the community is only 250. So we try to be, do all due diligence, be honest, speak the real numbers. If we are not sure, if there is dispute, we are seeking the legal advice from the state. What else do you want from us? I don't see how much more transparent we can be. This committee always, in the past two years at least and also before, allowed anyone to speak on any matter in front of us. So I don't think we can be any more open than we are. Two, from the very beginning, establish a policy to, against all odds, to put everything into the public eye, even things someone heard of as negotiations with the union. I know many people objected to this. The majority of the committee decided that because we negotiate on the half of the entire community, this information should be available to the community to see what we're doing. The blackout which took place, for a moment, it was by request of the mediator, we agreed that maybe to convert this process, we are going to agree to the blackout for a moment. But at no point in this, we agreed that we will never release this information. So this was only temporary blackout. Right now, all of this is on the website. So I don't know how much more transparent we can, we can be here in this situation. On top of this, hopefully, I would hope that in these two years, this committee, as if this together, should build some credibility with the community that what we say is what we mean and we can back it up. And if we are not sure, we will make sure that this is verified by someone else.
And for those who doubt that we're working towards getting very large concessions from our teachers' union, I would recommend you go online and check the last two contract proposals from each side. The last proposal from the teachers and the last proposal from the school committee. While they differ, they each include $440,000 worth of concessions or savings for fiscal year 2011. And they both include an 18% co-share for health insurance. That much we've agreed on.
But the last proposal, to begin to be completely clear here, the last proposal from the teachers, it was, yes, concessions of 440 or 460, right, in the first year.
It was 444. Yes, the second year, we had problems.
Minus in the last session.
But the first year, we have, we have both offered concessions for next year.
These were two years, yeah. Okay, so that's, everyone can look it up. But I, I don't know how can, how we can be more transparent. And we will remain like this to the very end.
The next issue is for rankings, please. I'm very pleased to announce, and I've already shared this information with the principals and the staff, that all five of our schools have achieved annual yearly progress, AYP, that's set forth under No Child Left Behind. And what that represents is that there was growth in all the measurable, this 37 subcategories, of which we don't all qualify because we don't have enough children. But we showed, we showed significant growth academically, both in math and in ELA, that we met the guidelines for growth and improvement. So again, that's a significant achievement for a school district to, to complete. And again, I congratulate all our employees and our administrators because it's truly a team effort to get that. And again, our staff, both teachers and sports staff, should be commended for, for another good job.
And I would like to stress that each year, it gets harder to make AYP. And it's not only in the academics overall. It is, you have to continue to increase your scores for students in subgroups such as special education. You also need to make progress in areas such as attendance. You can fail to meet AYP if your attendance level drops.
Congratulations.
And graduation.
All those indicators, it's not just one test.
It's very, very, sometimes very high-performing schools actually fail to make AYP.
Or they have a school that doesn't make it, you know, like the schools, but-
In the district. So to have all of our schools make it is quite an accomplishment.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the meaning and contribute to this. Senior project early dismissal requests.
Pete is not here. No, I've been informed before.
No, I was thinking, Tom, before.
How did I ask at your table? Mr. Forrest isn't here. Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry. You have his, you have the backup. Mr. Forrest is our senior project coordinator. He's asking for permission to have a half-day on June 2nd for which children will, the students will be judged on their senior projects. And you can see a schedule. We free Peter up and one with Lee McKenney to come and do a lot of the activities that you see from 9:30 to 12:00. This is open to the public. Anybody wants to serve as a judge, they can, they don't, it would be nice if they called the high school and let Pete know. That extension 231. You call the high school, 624-8494. Pete's extension is 231.
We could just call the high school.
Call the high schools. Right, but, you know, that's Pete's number. And we always have a great turnout of, of community members to come. The training is very simple. It's not difficult to go through and, and see the children present their projects. It's really an experience. And I recommend it to anyone, especially if you haven't done it yet, excuse me, to try to come because it really is, and, and the kids got to charge out of it. They, they get dressed up, they're nervous, and they do a, a real good job. I've served as a judge for the last few years and I enjoy, you know, the various presentations, so I agree.
I made a motion to accept Mr. Forrest's schedule for senior projects.
Accept the motion.
And I would also like to say that I've been at those also. And what I like to see is it shows our multiple career paths. It shows how diverse this school is and all the people that, we, we try to set everybody up when they leave here to go in a direction that will be good for their life.
Because it's a very complicated process that the children have to go through. But to see the culmination, last year we had, I was fortunate to see a student, well, pig roast, a real-life pig roast.
It's just amazing.
I mean...
Superintendent called on that one. I was watching, building a shed.
Yeah, I wasn't assigned to that one.
It was great because you could smell it around 9:30.
Not the pig decorated one.
Another year, another year, we had someone bring up, literally, a car up onto the curb and the student had refurbished from, from a junk, so. It really, a sailboat, we had a sailboat last year. That was another factor.
It flips into the talents of the, of the students and it's...
And it's a way for them to demonstrate the skill sets that they developed. And I highly recommend it.
Yeah, it's a great experience. It's also a great experience to see the school from inside because especially if you don't have kids and you don't interact with the school with people who don't have children.
And these are all scenes, just, you know, some misconception might be called, "Just a good kid." No. Although our kids are good, but it's kids of all ability levels.
Of all interests.
And of all interests, and it's just fabulous.
And that's what's so positive about it is that students can select their own topics or, or area of focus. And typically, it's not purely academic. It's a new skill that they learn or a product that they produce and can display.
Has to be a learning strategy. What they, what they choose, sometimes it's something of interest.
And I think they're very proud to be able to, to show off their accomplishments to people outside of the school community, outside of the teachers who, who have seen them work on it and just to share it with adult members of the community. And the feedback they get from the judges is always very positive.
And the other thing it does, it can help them with their career paths because one girl I saw, thought she wanted to be a nurse. And when she went through everything, she said, "I don't want to do this at all." So at least she didn't go to school thinking she was going to be a nurse. And then what if she failed at that? And she thinks she had failed, but she really didn't. She just wanted to something she shouldn't have been in. And so you, it's nice you can directly remember that. You hate to see someone...
So everyone in this room, including Marcia, is going to be judged?
When it's June 2nd?
June 2nd.
Letters have gone on.
You're disqualified if you have a student who's a senior this year.
Oh, you could come, but you just can't judge your daughter. They wouldn't want to see you there anyway.
What day is June 2nd?
June 2nd. I want to say Wednesday.
Yes, Wednesday, June 2nd.
Okay, so we have a vote to take.
Sally, you have the motion.
Yeah, that's the motion.
Exactly what you said.[1636.14]